Okay, Mrs. Kopp.
Let me.
Mrs. Kopp.
Let me call.
Oh, I thought you, okay.
No, I just want to make sure you had your glasses on and everything, you know.
Yeah. Who's not here?
Welcome to this meeting in the Wooddale Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Roy Sei. I am the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Kopp.
Here.
Mr. Crusiani is absent. Mr. Kadala.
Here.
Dr. Madonna.
Here.
Mr. Davis is absent. Mrs. Schroeder.
Here.
Chairman Sei.
There. I declare a quorum present. We have three public hearings scheduled for tonight. The hearings will be transcribed by official court reporter. And all testimony will be given under oath that at the hearing, there will be opportunity for the public to offer testimony and to comment. Following the public hearings in these cases are deliberations, which we will be open to the public in the sense that all are invited to listen and to watch. The public, however, may not speak during our deliberations. The zoning ordinance requires a prevailing vote by a majority of members of the zoning Board of Appeals for those matters on which will be referred to the City Council for approval and for those matters on which the zoning Board of Appeals will make the final decision. We ask that all applicants here tonight provide a general description of their proposals and give specific evidence to demonstrate the applicant's proposal meets standards of the zoning ordinance for the relief requested. The burden is on the applicant to prove the case. With respect to others who wish to speak, you will be given an opportune and given an opinion or present specific evidence as why you believe that the applicant meets or fails to meet the standards for the relief requested. Finally, we will strictly adhere to the schedule prepared for tonight's meeting. In case of an applicant or in event you or your attorney have filed an appearance as an objector, you will be afforded sufficient time within to which to present your evidence. Whether you are a member of the public wishing to make a statement for the record or a witness testifying behalf of the applicant or an objector, you will be placed under oath and begin by stating your name and address. If you are not presenting evidence on behalf of the applicant or objector, your remarks will be taken after the applicant and all those who have filed an appearance as objector have presented all their evidence. You will be subject to questions by the zoning Board of Appeals and the applicant or the objector. Allow as many people as possible be heard. If you are not an applicant or objector, we request that your remarks be limited to five minutes. If additional time is needed, the hearing will be continued to the next available hearing date. I will now call the first matter before us this evening. The agenda tonight indicates we have five public hearings. We actually closed the public hearings on two matters listed. We will address those in the business section tonight. Therefore, the first hearing in his case number 06-Z11, which was continued from August 21st, 2006 meeting. This case is in regard to the petition of Gallow International Development Corporation, which requests a map amendment rezoning property located at the southwest corner of Devon and Wooddale Road from R1 single-family residence to B2 retail and limited service business district for the purpose of construction and use of retail business development. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Kopp.
Here.
Mr. Kadala.
Here.
Dr. Madonna.
Here.
Mrs. Schroeder.
Here.
Chairman Sei.
There. I declare there is a quorum present. Roger, please indicate when notice of the, in case number 06-Z11 was published and whether, as secretary, you have the certificate of publication from the newspaper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are in receipt of the certificate of publication from the Daily Herald newspaper. The notice of, public notice, was published on August 3rd, 2006, excuse me, with a control number of 3791232. And the zoning sign had been placed upon the property in the appropriate location with the appropriate information. Thank you.
As the petitioner present, please allow yourself to be placed under oath and then present information relative to the petition and the standards set out in the Wooddale zoning code for the requested rezoning. Excuse me, sir. What is your position with Gallow? Okay, thank you.
How would you like to, how would you like me to present this base? We tabled this to this meeting because of, at the time, we had not had a contract with the city in purchasing this property yet. Now we are the contract purchaser of the property in question. I just wanted to know if the board needs to be updated on where we left off the last meeting up to this meeting or?
All we did at the last meeting, we just continued. We didn't discuss it.
Correct, correct. Okay. Our purpose here tonight is to basically have approval for us to get rezoning of the piece of property in question at the corner of Wooddale and Devon. It's currently known as Eno Auto Service Property. It's a building that's basically been there since vacant for approximately two years. Basically, our zoning Board of Appeals, our standard review process is basically stating is the existing use and rezoning of nearby properties adjacent to that area, basically commercial. To the north and to the west, there's basically residential communities now, as well as to the south, excuse me, to the east and to north, there's basically retail businesses currently there. To the west and the south are residential. We are currently looking to put, to redevelop it with a retail business center there. Item two under the system is extent of which property values are diminished by existing zoning. Existing zoning is R1. We feel like the existing site is not practical for a single-family residence to be rebuilt of this site. And the reason being is it's located at the corner of Wooddale and Devon. That's our reasoning behind that. The extent of which the existing zoning or proposed zoning promotes the general health, safety, or welfare of the citizenry of the city is removing of the vacant building from the site and redeveloping for a betterment of the community. The relative gain to the public or compared to the hardship imposed upon the petitioner, you know, the commercial development would serve the needs and entertainment of the community. In our opinion, we have a lot of residential things going on. There's new residential community right there. There could be several different things put into this retail-type development that we're proposing to do. And the retail portion, obviously, as you see on the screen, this area here, that is adjacent Harris Bankers under construction as we speak. This is basically the frontage of Devon, and this is where Wooddale will be coming in at. The substantial ability, the substantial ability of the particular property for the purposes of which they're presently zoned, again, we go back, it's currently zoned R1, and we don't find the site, or the site is not practical for a single-family residence. The length of time the property has been vacant as presently zoned, considered in the context of land development in the area which is properly is located, we know it's been vacated for approximately two years at this time right now. The compatibility of the existing zoning vis-a-viss the compatibility of the proposed zoning with the existing comprehensive land use of the plan of the city. The commercial development of the site, as you see in this exhibit here, is compatible with the land use plan of the city. And finally, the evidence or lack of evidence of community need for the proposed petitioner, which would require proposed zoning. Removing of an abandoned building, basically an eyesore, because in our opinion, is an eyesore of the community at that intersection. It would provide a growing, it would provide for a growing market with the, provide for a growing residential market with commercial development. That's what our plan is.
Okay, I got one quick question here.
Yes.
Being that site was a gas station.
Yes.
The tanks, and has EPA given you a release on to develop that land?
We are currently, yes, that has been done. A report has been filed with the City of Wooddale. We're finalizing that as we speak, yes.
And the commercial building, is that going to be one building or is it going to be a series of stores or?
One building.
One building.
One building with broken into retail spaces, yes, sir.
Well, how many, how many retail stores could?
Approximately six right now is the, is the plan.
Is there any questions for any members of the board? Roger, you want to give a quick overlay on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ross is going to be placing the proposed site plan on the overhead. And what I can start out by doing is mentioning the fact that Gallow International had come before this body back in August of this year, back on the 21st. And what they had done was rezone the property, as you see there, as the lot on the left portion of Auto Shoes, or rather subdivision. And basically, what this, what this particular proposal is, is not only for the rezoning from R1 to B2, it has to deal with the upper right-hand corner, or the southwest corner of Devon and Wooddale Road, labeled in this depiction as future acquisition parcel, which is the Eno property. And based upon that information we had received, Gallow International is now looking to combine those two lots and re-subdivide it into Lot 1 and Lot 2. And that way, they can move forward with the development of that corner parcel into retail commercial space. That's all I have for right now.
One quick question, Roger. You have a public utility easement there. How is that going to be handled on the, beyond the south, south border or south lot line of these proposed?
Well, certainly, when the final engineering review comes through, it's going to have details with regard to their submittal for whatever they plan on that property. But as with any utility easement, it must be free and clear of any encroachment by buildings or permanent structures.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
No comment, just one small question, and then, as I see that map, so that, I believe the last meeting, we approved the B2 zoning for Lot 1 and 2.
Yes, but it did not include the Eno property.
Which is now becoming Lot 1.
Correct.
So we are consolidating the future acquisition parcel with Lot 1.
Correct. They're re-subdividing, and unfortunately, it needed two steps to get done because the contract was not signed at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other, any comments here? Is there anyone in objection to the petition or any member of the general public in attendance who wishes to make a comment or has a question for the petitioner? If so, please stand and be placed under oath. Come up, come up here, ma'am, because you'll have to go up to the podium, please. I'm going to go up to the podium, please.
My question is?
Please, into the mic, please, because you're on TV now.
Oh, oh, yeah. Things have changed. Of the six?
Your name?
Janet Krabs. 173 North Oakwood. Of the six stores that you're going to be renting out, do you have anyone that's interested in utilizing the space yet? Or is this pure speculation?
We do not have a signed tenant at this point, no, but we are targeting in our marketing program, people such as H&R Block, Panera Restaurant, things like that, is our goal to get more higher-end type retail in that area, yes. If that helps answer your question.
It does. There's, there's a space in Bensonville that hasn't filled up either yet, so I'm just wondering how much strong interest you would have to fill up the spaces.
We're getting a lot of strong interest right now. We're just waiting to move forward with getting the project built.
Okay. The middle section that you had on your rendering, are all those six units the same size? Or is that the middle going to be something different? Looked like the roof was raised.
Correct. The middle section's going to be a little bit larger unit for a little bit larger type of action, such as Panera, things like that. We'll need more space to make it more attractive to them.
Okay. Is it where the roof was raised up, is there any kind of skylight or something?
Yes, there will be option to be able to put a skylights and have light coming into the space from up above, yes.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? Anybody want to make a statement? Well, as soon as Roger comes back, we'll... You can give the staff recommendation concerning this petition. Roger, is there a staff recommendation concerning this, the petition?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for the delay, but we needed to speak to the police department on an issue. Yes, staff recommends the approval of the, of the petitioner's request to rezone this property from R1 to B2 for a limited services business district for the construction use of retail commercial development. Thank you.
Are there any questions of Mr. Noack from the board concerning the staff recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I have just one small one. Looking at the new Lot 1 configuration, counting that feature, and looking at the parking spaces itself, has a determination been made that that would fulfill our requirement for B2?
Yes, it more than, yes, it more than covers the requirements for the, not only the lot area, and they'll also be required to comply with any of the bulk regulations consistent with B2 zoning.
Thank you.
But we're, we wouldn't be doing that assessment until they submitted a plan.
Is there any, any questions for Mr. Noack from the, from the petitioner or from the objector?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing done, I will now entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Later during the meeting, the board will commence deliberations on the petitioner's request. Need a motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion second. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Kopp.
Yes.
Mr. Kadala.
Yes.
Dr. Madonna.
Yes.
Mrs. Schroeder.
Yes.
Chairman Sei.
Yes, this motion is carried. Public hearing on case number 06-Z11 is closed. The second matter on the agenda is case number 06-TA12 regarding the petition of the City of Wooddale for the text amendment to the zoning code, Chapter 10, for an overlay district encompassing residential properties adjacent to Edgebrook Road and Oakwood Drive. The proposal reduces R1 lot with requirement at the building line from 80 feet to 50 feet. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Kopp. Mr. Kadala.
Here.
Dr. Madonna.
Here.
Mrs. Schroeder.
Here.
Chairman Sei.
There. I declare there is a quorum present. Roger, please indicate when the notice of the hearing in case number 06-TA12 was published and for purposes of the text amendment, and whether, as secretary, you have the certificate of publication from the newspaper.
Yes, but Ross has that file with that information, so he'll have to give you the overview.
Okay, Roger, you'll have to be sworn in, please.
Chairman Sei, that notice was published in the Daily Herald on August 31st, under control number T3807589. Furthermore, notices were mailed to all affected properties of the overlay district in addition to properties within 250 feet of the overlay district.
Go ahead, with your presentation.
As you see up on the screen, the, is outlined the proposed overlay district. It is generally the residential properties on Edgebrook and Oakwood Drive from Irving Park down to Carter Avenue. Currently, in this overlay district, there are 83 homes. The number of homes in this area may actually decrease, as there are still a few properties that are, remain within the floodway or flood plain, which, as they become available, will be, take, will be removed, and a few buildable vacant lots. This area is under the R2 zoning, which was, has been in existence since 1976. And the current R2 zoning specifies that there'll be a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, a minimum lot width of 80 feet, a minimum front yard setback of 25 feet, a minimum side yard setback of 10% of the lot width or 10 feet, whichever is less, a minimum rear yard setback of 30 feet, maximum principal building height of 30 feet, maximum lot coverage of 35% and a floor area ratio of 0.3. Question then is, how many of these homes and lots do not meet the current zoning requirements? 68. 68 or 82% of the lots do not meet the current zoning requirements. What are the current zoning requirements that these lots do not meet? Sorry, some formatting must have changed the font, so it's not laying out perfectly, but lot width, all 68 non-conforming lots do not meet this requirement. The other is lot size. However, only three of these lots do not meet that lot size requirement of 10,000 square feet. What are the consequences for the non-conforming lots? If damage beyond 50% by fire or other disasters, these properties could not be rebuilt without first obtaining a variation. This is something that was, is viewed to not be equitable or fair to these properties in that they are legally platted lots. What about the 75% rule, which states as long as a lot is within 75% of the conforming, or within 75% of the existing zoning, it would be considered buildable. Even when applying the 75% rule, only 25 existing houses, I'm sorry, 25 existing houses or 30% could still not be rebuilt without first obtaining a variation. So we do view this as quite a large problem for the area, in that many projects, we see a large potential for new, for variations coming in front of this board, that many would view as unnecessary. So the answer would be is to create an overlay zoning district. Now, the overlay zoning district would use the standard zoning of the R2 district with one minor change, in that we would remove the 80-foot requirement and replace it with 50 feet. All the other zoning would remain the same, and there would be no other variations or changes to the zoning for this district. The result would be that not only three lots would remain legal non-conforming, and the only non-conformity would be for lot size. These three lots would meet all other zoning requirements. So with this change of just taking this, this one area town from an 80-foot wide, foot-wide lot width down to 50-foot wide, would reduce our non-conformities to almost zero and allow for the properties within this district to obtain permits in a more efficient manner.
Will you finish, Ross?
Yes, sir.
Is there any comments from the board? Mrs. Kopp.
These three remaining lots, are they, they already have construction on them?
I do believe they have.
Mr. Kadala. Dr. Madonna.
Can you put the proposed overlay district down one more time? I don't know how well you can tell, but let me take a lot of 174, for example.
Okay.
Can you see it?
Along?
It obviously is one that currently would conform.
There's also a lot that is currently in the floodway, which will mean that no property can ever be built on that. No, no residents can ever be built on that.
Do you believe that that might be one of them?
Well, that, that lot would conform with all of our requirements.
Right.
The, the statistics that I was putting up about the, of the properties that do not meet the zoning requirements do not include any of the properties that have already been reclaimed from the floodway, flood.
Okay. Okay. So taking this overlay district and something like this, and in fact, you, as you say, you are changing it to 50 feet from 80 foot, but if someone has an 80-foot lot or a 100-foot lot now, would they then be allowed to build two homes on it?
They potentially could come in for a subdivision, provided they met all the applicable requirements.
Thank you.
How, how much time and thought has staff put into, you know, the consideration of the fact that you're changing the essential characteristic of the neighborhood by doing this? And let me explain how. I understand that a lot of these lots are 50 feet right now, and you're looking to make that a legal conforming situation, which means that a builder, even a homeowner, could come in and try to build a 3,000 or even potentially 4,000 square foot home. The essential characteristic of this neighborhood is based on the fact that you have small homes and you have old growth oak. Those two things change considerably. As the zoning Board of Appeals, we're supposed to sit up here and discuss and think about, you know, how a variation or a request for a variation changes that essential characteristic. I think I've kind of, I don't think this is a surprise to anybody on this board. I mean, I've always kind of pushed for this is R2. If, you know, if a builder wants to come in and do some redevelopment, that, you know, lot consolidation would be, should be required. There is no, basically, by going to a 50-foot lot legal, you're making it look like an R4 neighborhood. I understand that the lots still would, still would meet the R2, but you don't really see that or feel that from the street. I look at the Wooddale zoning map and, you know, in this whole part of town, there's, there's no R4, and you're not even that particularly close to any R3. So now I feel that this kind of stands out like a sore thumb. I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, when, when staff was going through this, you know, what was the thought process for weighing the pros and cons, you know, maybe making somebody have to do lot consolidation for, for new construction? I also understand that, you know, God forbid, in the, in the event of a tragedy, a fire, tree falling on a house, whatever, where more than 50% of the value of the house is gone, you know, a variance is required to rebuild, and, and that's unfortunate that that's a $500 or $600 cost, whatever it is, but I know this board would always allow that reconstruction, and I'm sure City Council would too. So while that may be a process that slows things down, and it may be somewhat of a financial burden, I have a hard time using that as justification to approve this overlay. I know a lot of thought's been put into it, and I appreciate that, and I like the concept, but I'm afraid it changes things too much.
The reason... The reason to do this is not only for new construction. New construction, quite honestly, was a very small consideration with doing this. The reason for the zoning change would be, quite honestly, all of these existing properties, let's say, we can take my situation, if I lived in one of these houses, my wife and I recently had triplets. I would not be able to stay in that house without doing an addition. Under the current guidelines, I would have to come before this board for a zoning variation. With my time constraints that I had with my needs, I needed to get something done. These lots were platted long before the zoning code was written. The zoning code was written in 1976. It created all these properties as non-conformings. As we're doing is basically looking at the zoning and saying, what makes sense? In this area of town, and this is not the only area of town that has this issue, and we will probably be before this board several more times over the next few years. This area of town, it makes sense to have a 50-foot lot width and a 10,000 square foot lot.
Any other questions?
I'm still worried about the three lots.
Oh, okay.
Are the, do all three of those lots that are currently have property on them, construction on them, or do they fall within the realm of the properties that if they were more than 50% destroyed, they could not rebuild currently?
I believe, I believe the answer on that is yes.
I'd like to know for sure. Because it doesn't affect them that much then if they're under that restriction anyway.
Well, the lots, if they're under 10,000 square feet plus, they don't meet the lot width. The likelihood that they're gonna meet the 75% requirement is very slim. Again, if there were three lots that needed to have variations because of catastrophe redevelopment, we feel that to be an acceptable number for this area of town, rather than 68.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in objection to the petitioner, or any member of the general public in attendance wish to make a comment or ask a question for the petitioner? If so, please stand and be placed under oath. Are, are you, you have, wait a minute. No, why don't you all get up here and get all sworn in at the same time?
You just get in there, ready, later, ready? You need to do your sentence, so I got 25, you should be, would you, no, you're gonna, you're gonna, you guys.
Now, you have to state your name and address, and then.
Okay, I'm nervous, so, but my name's Renee Shaboni, and I'm at 251 at Oakwood. So, I'm in Old Yellow, you know, the house, it's in between the two lots. This whole situation has occurred because of this. I'm the one that's been in the middle. Okay, the builder built a beautiful house next door to me. I mean, he did a good job, he built it very well, but the whole neighborhood has, is so upset because this is changing the whole atmosphere of the community. This, this is two blocks that you want to change the zoning on, two blocks. Now, the, the second lot that's next to me is way smaller, it's the 50-foot lot. There's no construction underneath it now. I've, I've, I have, I've been the one that's been mowing the lawn over there, not the builder, okay? Now, if I could afford to pay to buy the land, I would have, but it was very expensive. I think the builder bought it in good faith. He was told he was, he could build on this lot. So it's not the builder's fault, okay? I don't know whose fault it is, I'm not laying any kind of blame or anything. But you guys haven't instituted this buying of property. You know, the one that's on Salt Creek, once a house is for sale, you buy it up, and then nobody can build on it again. Because there's such a big problem that's going on in this neighborhood, on this one lot, I think it would be best for the community, for all the neighbors, I think it would be best for the city of Wooddale to get rid of all this legal mess, and it would be best for the builders. If you guys just bought that lot, like you do along Edgebrook, all along Salt Creek. And that's my idea, and it would solve everybody's problem. You won't be changing the whole, the atmosphere of the community. And we know that this lot, this zoning change is for this one builder who's been having such a problem. And I know because I found out about it way before these letters came out, okay? We knew it was, you know, I found out about it, and I thought it was really kind of a, it, you know, these people have lived here for years, I just moved in here two years ago. I moved in here because the first thing you saw, you see the trees, you see the atmosphere of the neighborhood. I know all the neighbors, we go, you know, we have, we have the neighbors sitting in my backyard all the time. We have a great time. This is the community. You guys are affecting the entire community because of this. And I think the best way out would be just to purchase that lot from the builder, just like you do all the other lots off of Edgebrook Road.
Hey, thank you for your comment.
Could you spell for me your first and last name, please?
Does anybody have a question? Does anybody have any, any question for the objector? Now, the next, next person.
Thank you.
Name's John Komorowski, 256 Oakwood Drive.
Before you get done, you'll have to give, give a copy of this to the court reporter, and then.
If you can, if we can give one of the ones I just gave you guys, I just gave them to you so you can take a look at them. Okay, here's, the first page is a copy of the zoning overlay district. And basically, there's three vacant lots that are left in this area. And they're all on Oakwood Drive. One is between, what is it, 236 and 224, between 229, 219, between 259 and 251. If you go to my color coding, the two green lots are basically buildable, meeting that 75% requirement. The pink lot, which we had a zoning variance hearing about last year and was denied, is the only vacant lot left in this, in this area that is considered a non-buildable lot. If you keep going in my handout, I've got minutes from zoning meetings last year, I've got minutes from the city council meeting from last year, and I've got the ordinance written that said this lot was not buildable. You can put this up. You, you've got to pack it, don't you? Don't you have one of these? Okay. If you go to the back of the pamphlet I handed out to you.
Oh, let's get it up on the, on the overlay here.
Hey, Terry, just go to the pictures, the flood pictures. Okay, there you go. This was the main reason we fought the zoning overlay, or the zoning variance last year, and are fighting the zoning overlay now. This area is a flood prone area, we're in the flood plain. These are pictures of my front yard, because of the sewer system that backs up across the street from me. The sewer system has been repaired, but they repaired it with the same-sized pipe, which made absolutely no sense. This whole thing, all of this water coming down, is all coming off of the church parking lot. It's got nowhere to go. All of this water is coming within 10 feet of the front of my house. If you go to the next picture, Terry, this is my backyard. We back up to Salt Creek. The first two pictures are of pictures with houses still on them before the city bought them and tore them down. The bottom two pictures are after the city bought the properties, tore the houses down. We're still having the flooding there. You know, by reducing this lot size to 50 foot, what's gonna stop a builder from coming in, tearing down these homes, and putting up these little McMansions? And when they're putting up these homes, what's the lot coverage percentage that they're putting up on these homes? They're, they're putting them to the max, they're putting them to 35% so they can recoup all of their money back for buying the house and the cost of tearing it down and rebuilding. So I'm totally against this zoning overlay. That's all I've got.
Is there anybody wish to question this person?
Yeah, I'll ask a question. When it rains, where does that water come from?
The sewer.
No.
The storm sewer coming down off of the church parking lot? The, the post office parking lot?
Right, yeah, because it goes down my driveway too. I had to move my driveway from one side to the other because of the building thing.
Who is the city's floodplain manager?
Wait a minute, ma'am.
Yes.
Give the court reporter your name again.
Oh, Renee Shaboni.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Who's the city's floodplain manager? Why aren't they present to be able to ask questions or answer questions about the flooding of this area? Because supposedly, the flood area was enlarged last year. We did receive a letter from the mayor stating that this area was expanded.
Well, maybe Roger can help you on that, who handles that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that would be the Director of City Services, Mr. Gary Holm, who is not available to be in attendance.
You know, I think we need some answers from him as to what the impact of all of these homes, all of the new homes that are gonna be coming in because of tear downs, what impact they're gonna have on the city storm and sanitary sewers also. You know, these systems were built many years ago, they replaced the sanitary lines, but they replaced, again, with the exact same size that was in there. They didn't upgrade the system when they had the streets torn up. Same thing with the sewer line that they just replaced, they didn't oversize it. They replaced it with the exact same-sized pipe that was there. That kid couldn't handle the water in the first place, back pitched or not. I was home last Monday when we had the rains. The rain didn't come down that heavy, it didn't cross the street like it did, but that sewer was working at full capacity. The ditch across the street from my house was totally filled. Just because it didn't come across the street doesn't mean that the next time we don't, we have a heavy rain, it's not gonna come across the street and flood my home again.
Is there any other person make a comment on this, this man's opinion? Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak here.
What, your name and address, please?
My name is Terry Cassioppo, I'm at 260 Oakwood Drive.
Did you say 6T?
260.
Thank you.
You know, unfortunately, I'm not happy to be here tonight. I think, you know, I don't know as residents why we're here asking the zoning official to enforce the zoning laws as they were written. That just seems ridiculous to me. You know, why are we, why are we increasing density in a flood-sensitive area? There's no question that Wooddale floods. You're all residents of Wooddale, you know the problems we've had, we're all long-term residents, we know what it's like. So why are we increasing density in a flood-sensitive area, especially this area, the most flood-sensitive area? Well, in my opinion, what I see, it's about profits, okay? And I'll tell you what, when I settled in this community with my wife to raise my kids, I chose this community, I love this community. You know, I didn't move to Stone Park, I didn't move to Cicero, where there's investors, city officials investing in land in the area that have influence over land use in this community, and I refuse to allow it to happen. And that's what I think this is about, okay? So what I'm suggesting is that this, I'm asking the board, as residents, when I look at the board, I see residents of the community, I see people who, I see around the community who understand what we're going through, and to change the law for one contractor who's not a resident, who isn't a part of this community, who's simply in it to make a profit. Now granted, I don't blame the contractor, I think the contractor got a stiff deal, because we all know what this is about. But, that being said, I'm asking the board on several levels, that there are so many ethical reasons why this is wrong, to approve this. And, you know, we as citizens have a right to come up here and, and defend our livelihood. Our homes are our livelihood, that's our largest investment.